College Jackson County Commission, August 5th, 2019, works as an order. Go call Mr. Mann.
Mr. Rich?
Present.
Mr. Benlin?
Present.
Ms. Gilbert?
Present.
Mr. Seuss?
And Chairman is present.
We have the floor. We'll have our invocations by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Ms. Gilbert.
God our Father in heaven, we're blessed to be here. We're blessed every day and we're thankful for those blessings. Right now, our country's hurting because of the loss of life over weekend, senseless acts that caused those, some folks to be killed and some of them injured. So, God, we just pray right now that you'll be with those that survived, help them to recover, be with the families that lost loved ones, give them peace and comfort as we know that you can. And, God, we just pray that you'll hear our nation, or you'll continue to watch over us every day. Thank you for our blessings in Christ's name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we got approved the agenda. I'd like to take in strike number two, three, and four. We're gonna have to get some more paperwork. We'll put these on the later work session.
Let me make the motion through the agenda.
With the changes?
With the changes.
Yeah. I have a motion.
Okay.
And I say that all favors may have.
Out.
No opposed. We have no awards presentations and Mr. Brown was gonna speak for me on the paper he's got that needs to be signed.
My name is Brandon Brown. I'm the Director of Jackson County Court Referring Community Corrections. We have a contract with the Department of Corrections and every year for the past 20 years, we've had to get a letter one time a year, signed by the County Commission in support of our, not as much the Community Corrections Program, but for us to operate and supervise Department of Corrections inmates in our program. I've provided a plan. We've updated the plan each year, whether we amend anything in there or not, we just revise it when they add something here or there. Y'all have a copy of that. And that's basically it. I just need the support of the County Commission. I've got the support of the judges and everyone else I know, the District Attorney, I just don't have the support, I just need the support from the County Commission.
Anybody have any questions? I got, I do have a copy in the office and I'll make sure that you can get a copy of it. If everybody says this for the one that is going forward. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Great. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Next big discussion items from the Commission. Number one would be a tax lien resolution of revenue commissioner.
I give you a copy of the resolution there. It might be something Mr. Porter might want to get, maybe want to word it different. But it gets, I wanted to switch the tax sale process this year from a tax sale to a lien sale. We had, I think, six counties in the state that done it. The bill passed the year before last and six counties done it last year. It's just something I feel like's better for the taxpayers, easier for us. It simplifies the process. The tax sale law and the code is 117 pages and the lien sale laws is, I think, seven pages. So, obviously, it's simpler. You know, the other, other way of doing it, you know, we really never had any problems, but it's so convoluted, the way it's written in the law, it could, you know, we could be sued doing it that way if we don't, if we don't do all the steps just right. And this tax sale lien just simplifies that. And you're noticing that resolution, the code that was passed or the bill that's passed, it's not really something that I have to have permission from you guys to do, but it's something I would rather have in the minutes and have, you know, a resolution on file that, you know, what year and everything we went to a lien sale. Lien sale, you know, I've been, I hate to sound like a broken record, but I've been asking y'all for, ever since I've been here, about that $2 a day penalty. And I feel like it's unfair to the people that has to pay it. And y'all have been very gracious and understanding about saying, you know, y'all would like to take it off, but I understand your situation, don't blame you. I know, I know you have to pay that money that brings in right now. But in this process, it, even though they might have to pay that $2, $2 a day penalty, on the back end, there's not as much interest from the pay, you know, we don't hit them with all the fees and everything that, that actually they pay, you know, the costs that we're out on advertising and stuff like that. So, it's just a, it's just a new process, a new way to do it. I included some pages in there with it too, explaining how it's done. Just, you know, if you wanna look at it just briefly, instead of selling stuff at the tax sale like we do every year, probably if it doesn't sell, we'll have a sale still, but it'll be a lien sale. So, instead of selling the property, I'll sell a lien on the property. What happens now is if I sell the property, then immediately people go out there and they take over the property and they, you know, we've had some, a lot of complaints. We've had a lot of people that go in and do just a little bit of work to the house and then charge the people that, you know, was unfortunate enough to lose a house, all this big, you know, for these repairs and just implanting costs. So, in this process, there's no excess bid. They bid at 12 percent. I'll start the bidding out, what I would typically do, say taxes were $100, I'll start the bidding out at $100 and it'd just go up from there until somebody stops bidding. So, in this process, it starts at $100 at 12 percent interest, that's what the return they'll get. And then the bidders will bid down. You know, they'll bid down from 12 all the way down to zero. And it spells out what happens, you know, if that, if we, somebody bids down to zero or, you know, if they have several people bid down to zero.
What would be the cost as per actual change of ownership? I mean, I know now it's three years.
Yeah. So, in the old, in the tax sale law, in the tax sale, what the law says is after three years, after three years, you know, just an individual can redeem the property, but a mortgage company could have seven years and if there was a minor child involved, it could be up to 10 years. So, the old way, they do get the property right away. I mean, they're, they're able to go out and rent the property, use the property, you know, right away, but they have to wait a lot longer to ever receive a tax, I mean, an actual deed for the property. In this new way, so for the three years, the redemptive period, they can't touch the property. In other words, you don't have some poor person that, if they could've paid the taxes, they would've paid them and then you go in there and run them off their property, you know. But in three years, the purchaser can actually go through Circuit Court and get a deed. So, there's a downside to it. A lot of investors that come, they're not gonna wanna do this because they wanna take over the property right away, but there's also a plus side to them. In three years, it's possible they could get a tax deed for the property. Or I say tax deed, they could actually get a deed for the property.
A deed for that minimum price that they just paid, say $100 down? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, it won't be $100 because of your, the $2 a day penalty, that, you know, so it's gonna be at least a $230 plus whatever the taxes were, and then there'll be a $5 fee on there. Now, if we decide to advertise, you'll notice in the bill, it's really up to me whether I advertise in the paper or on the website or just post it somewhere. So, if we decide to advertise that, it could be in there. So, for instance, say the taxes total is $500 and somebody bids $500 in three years, if somebody doesn't redeem that property, then yes, they could get a deed for, for that property.
But it, most of the time, it's considerably more than the taxes they owe them.
Yeah. I mean, the way it works now, like I said, it could be $500 and at, once the sale's over, you know, your dad's been there before and bought some property.
Yeah.
You know, it could really go up high. And some people bid and bid and bid and they don't care if they bid $20,000, $30,000 because they're doing it for the interest that they're gonna receive back. It's not really about the property as much. But in this way, it really protects the people that's losing the property. Because the old way, they had to pay back the taxes, plus they had to pay back 12 percent interest on whatever was bid. So, you know, they could be owing a lot of money. So, this way, all they have to pay back is the taxes that were due plus the penalties and then whatever interest rate they bid. So, for instance, if somebody bid 8 percent, you know, next year, that person that owns the property had to pay back the taxes that they were due plus the $2 a day penalty, you know, 8 percent for down on that, on that money.
So, it makes it easier for that person that's experiencing hardship to get the property?
Exactly, exactly.
And then the person that buys the property can't touch, do any improvements or nothing for three years?
No, not till they get a deed for the property. So, basically, I mean, we used to sell the property and now we're just, we're just placing a lien on the property.
Looks to me like it's gonna save us a lot of, you know, we're out there, we have a lot of people from out of town coming in, like you said, bidding $45,000 on a acre track of property that you know.
It'd probably be a different set of investors. It'd be, we'll still have investors. I mean, there's a lot of things, if y'all wanna know, in the new tax lien sale, a lot of things changed. I tell you one thing, for instance, so if I had a piece of property that nobody bids on, then as it is now, we just, that just goes to the state. And the state puts it in their inventory and it may sit in their inventory forever. They might sell it to somebody, but we don't get anything. So, now, if nobody bids on that, it goes into the county inventory. So, the county sits there and holds that property. I mean, we rarely have property that nobody bids on, but if it did, instead of it going to the state, at least it stays within the county. And then we can decide if we wanna, we can sell that property, you know, that's the way the, the new law spells it out. If nobody bids at the tax sale and I have four or five left, you know, we can call in the investor and we can negotiate a price, negotiate an interest rate and just sell it to that investor.
Yeah.
So, the county's gonna get their money either way. They're gonna get their tax money. At least we don't have property that goes to the state that nobody bid on. Any questions?
Thank you.
Everybody, if you'll put this on next week's meeting?
Sounds like it'll be easier for everybody involved.
Next is vote and present. If everybody, Patton, here's the new map of the new vote and presentings and assign a resolution with each one of them, the new presenting sign. There's a lot of work to be done. I think it's gonna end up saving the county quite a bit of money over these years.
So, to kind of add again.
We just took Mr. Seuss's recognition.
Yes.
That's his area.
And he's voted in.
Next, we'll go into that next year, then bring it up later.
The next election year.
March.
Yeah, March. I'm just gonna do. If everybody's here to let me put down on this week's meeting also, next would be reports from staff. Mr. Mann?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have some updates that I can provide this time. And I'll be referring to the weekly activity list with SNI. I won't go through all the routine maintenance activities, but I would like to cover the other projects engineering related. And I'll start with County Route 61. That's a federal aid resurfacing project, as you all probably recall, to the Piscata School Zone. Those plans, we're working on the plan submittal for that and we'll be pursuing a school board agreement for that school zone, caution lines, et cetera. County Route 59, that was a project that's been finalized, or we're working to finalize that project. We're to the stage for ENI submission for reimbursement, so those reimbursements should be on the way shortly. HRR project, that has previously been submitted, that's for County Route 77. We're still on track. That's, that's under ALDOT review currently and we're still on track for a September 27 laying on that one. The Metheny Bridge Deck Rehabilitation Project, that has been awarded and the notice of proceed has been issued, so we look forward to some contract work commencing within 15 days from the day that issuance occurred.
I'm looking for that to be down.
That occurred last week. Most likely fully closed only two weeks. Damon Inventory FEMA Project, so we have had FEMA personnel with us fairly consistent, consistently for the last two weeks, working through the finalization of product submission into the grants portal system. Eleven projects, all the previously completed work was broken down into 11 projects and also the initial submissions for the slides, sinks were also entered. And we're anticipating a three to four month review period before some of those reimbursements start, start to come into this. And then there are utility projects. I won't go through all those, there are several that are ongoing now that we routinely visit and permit. They're on that list, those. If there are any questions about that, I can hopefully address those. Future HRR project, County Route 21, 42, and 67, I have possibilities on that. That's under ALDOT review on which they may fund if they do need. And then Rebuild Alabama, so part of our Rebuild Alabama law that's passed includes project submission and prioritization by the end of this month, August 31st deadline that require approval from this body. So, we're working, have been working on that since the, the forms, I think there's still some audit review finalization required, but we do have some forms as of recent to compile these on and get them in front of you. So, what we'll likely do is try to create a shortlist for you all, for your selection on local road. We'll also be working on the ST projects. We've talked briefly on that, but that's, that's a gap in funding for that particular category of projects. So, this Rebuild Alabama funding will likely fit that. And then we'll do that replacement funding, so that'll be the substitute for our, what was federal aid resource. And we'll be looking to substitute and that substitute money will follow the same federal aid process as far as class of roads, bridges, et cetera. So, all that to say, we'll be getting a shortlist in front of you, but in the meantime, if you could be thinking about your districts and local road projects, ST projects. So, an ST project would have most likely been a local road with high traffic that had hot mix pavement on there. So, not a federal aid route, but a road that was paved with hot mix and it's most likely gonna be a higher traffic local road, but not a federal aid route. Hopefully, our shortlist will include your thoughts, but please, please be thinking along those lines and we'll, we'll have that in front of you. Some bridge inspection work this month too. County Route 354, that's interim inspection. County Route 82 will be doing a deck soundening on it, but it's basically to wrap up our rehab work. If you recall, 82 has been closed. The structural components to that rehab work is complete. We have some garb rel and curb work to do to finalize that, but we'll also be doing some deck soundening as part of that. And then lastly, a road closing that will start tomorrow and lasts approximately three days, and that's on County Route 45 in Cedar Grove area, between both intersections of County Route 155, and that's gonna be a crossbar crossdrain replacement. So, that was advertised, last, the advertisement went out for the closure last week, probably maybe Wednesday, the weekend, or most likely one time this week. So, all that should be out there, but I just wanted to reiterate that. Any questions?
You mentioned the ST and you asked tax dollars and previously hot paved road. Are we under the same restrictions as we are with the federal dollars, like 33? You know, there was a section of it that we had to leave out because of crossdraining shoulder which is small. Would that be eligible for?
30D with 33 in that section would be an excellent candidate for Rebuild Alabama.
Would tie two sections together, we didn't have any pavement on them.
To finish that continuity for the project, so it's already, yes, sir. Be a perfect project selection. Good question. Any, anything else I can?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
I've had several calls over 93 down the mountain. Guys been calling me, saying, "Well, I've got my log scooter, I've got a dozer. Can I just go up there and work on that and fix it to where we can come off and up and down the mountain?" I said, "This gonna be a issue by safety is number one. I mean, liability will be number two." So, what do I need to tell them?
As far as, as far as enforcing no travel on a closed road?
Right.
I'm not sure what our role in that would be. The, the road department, I'm not sure, I don't know what our role would fit in that. What someone chooses to do such, you know, such as something along those lines, I really can't speak to, I don't know. But it's, you know, it's closed, it's closed for a reason because it's deemed unsafe for travel. And unfortunately, it's gonna be some time before we get to that. That road in particular, the lower section, a lot of the road is gone.
Oh, yeah.
And the middle section, there is a substantial grade differentiation where that has dropped down. So, I would not recommend travel by anyone on that, on that road.
That's what I told them and it seems like I'll tell them that, then another guy that's got a dozer. He said, "You've got a dozer?" I said, "Yeah, I would do it." I knew it would be perfectly safe. I wouldn't mind fixing it where, you know, emergency traffic going down it, but I'd be liable myself. But, you know, the safety of the general public's what I'm looking after and I don't think it'd be a good idea to do.
Yes, sir. I don't think promoting travel in an un-repaired state would be wise. It would be my recommendation, recommendation that we don't encourage that.
Well, that's exactly what I've been telling them and they don't wanna see it that way. And I understand it is a burden on them and I hate it, but, you know, safety comes first.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate it.
Mr. Campbell, would you mind, I know we've been over this several times, by addressing how FEMA comes in, because I've been hit up this week myself and last week. People are understanding we have no money. They're, they're asking, "Is it gonna be fixed? Is it gonna be closed?" And I keep assuring them that it would be fixed, but just kinda how we plan on the reimbursement of the money coming through in the timeframe that you went over several times and I'm sorry to ask you to do it again.
No problem. So, and, and this, bear with me, because this changes every, every FEMA projects that we have done and submitted, received reimbursement from. It's been different every one I've been involved with. So, this, this disaster brought on a new, FEMA's new system, which included a grants portal, it was electronic system for document entering, information entering, being able to scan in documents that, that support what we're turning in for reimbursement. And we've had a program manager that's been, once we got to the stage of program manager, it's been fairly consistent. So, from that aspect, it's been better in my opinion, this newer system. But there's, there's a really large learning curve to their, their portal and their system, logging into it, finding information, finding, or to enter information, entering information on one sheet that don't correspond to another. So, luckily, we've had guidance and we've had really good guidance at late with getting all that entered. So, so to answer your question, I guess as short as I can, once we get all that information in there, then it begins their series of reviews that it must go through. Now, I'm talking now on work that's been done, not work to be done. So, on this work that's been done, once it, once it goes through the series of reviews and we've had the program manager helping us get it the way they want it in there, that's the three to four months that I speak of, that I anticipate based on what he's told me. We anticipate that before we start seeing reimbursement. Now, that's, if everything, if everything goes right, we have it entered, we have the support information they need, et cetera. They may have environmental questions, they may have dimension questions, they may have location questions. So, all that could take rework, but it's fairly complex in the detail, as you might imagine, on each specific site, which sites they group together to make a project, et cetera. So, that's kinda the work that's been done. The work to be done will be, will be multi-stage and just getting to the point of breaking ground. So, one of the main things is gonna be making sure that we don't have a misstep that causes any problem with our reimbursement. What I mean by that is assessing the scope of work and making sure we have that contained, whether that be through geotag, through whatever method that, that we feel best about proceeding, this body feels best about proceeding on how to complete that work. We wanna make sure they're involved on all the steps of selecting, selecting a contractor, whether that be engineering wise or repair wise, and then making sure they're involved through their documents process and their new portal, getting the information in front of them and having their concurrence, even though they can't technically tell us what to do, if you ask them, but having their concurrence as we go and making sure they're there with us and we don't misstep on a, on a method where we jeopardize any possible reimbursement funding. So, the, from here on out, if this, if this reimbursement on the work that we have done flows in, here on out, it's gonna be a one at a time, most likely on, the one at a time on what we can afford. And then how far we get ahead of ourselves is really gonna depend on, in my opinion, on what kinda cash flow we have coming in, whether it be from 17 or from this work that's been completed and that's coming in. So, I hope I answered your question.
Yes, sir. And well, one of the reasons they brought it up to me is the last person they addressed it with, he said that there's a becoming issues with Tennessee side and one of the alternate routes going off at Nika Jack, which is not ours, but that's one of their concerns, is there's some base failure and damage and sliding possibly occurring in that area. So, they were really concerned to be down the two routes out here off the mountain, and one's that would be straight and the other would be off flat.
Yeah, 73, we, when I was with ALDOT, we got a slide repair there just above the Tennessee line and 73, there, there's been movement in that region there for as, as long as I can remember, so.
That was one of their concerns.
I understand, I understand the concerns. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Of the four lines, maybe a priority approach each one, in what order we're gonna approach each one? I know we would most definitely want to do the highest traffic areas and affect the most population first, but do we have that laid out yet?
I can offer an opinion on that. Now, we can, we can operate under whatever direction we decide to go, but, and it's really kinda what shook out of logic as we were getting into this. But we concentrated on 17 first because it wasn't a FEMA project, it's FHWA ER funding, which in the past, we've been able to receive that reimbursement faster. It's a little simpler process, even though the cost sharing on our part is a little higher, so it's an 80/20 versus these, yeah, well, the other versus the other, that would've been 75/25, but the state kicks in, the other 12 and a half, so, or it would only be up 12 and a half percent on the FEMA's. So, 17 was a priority based on the fact that we were anticipating we could get that funding back sooner. Then it just really boils down to the other three that are remaining. Summer House Mountain, that road is the only way up and down to get to those homes. 93 was next out of complexity and the reason it was next out of complexity is because 38, we're not certain that we'd do better rerouting that road and realigning that all together, doing away with the switchback, coming through the cut in the mountain and taking a different direction with the roadway. That's gonna take, that's gonna take quite a bit of engineering to decide if it's feasible and the best route. And we're gonna have to prove to FEMA through cost benefit analysis that, hey, for your investment, this makes sense to abandon this section of roadway. The reason I say that is that section of roadway and the switchback has had problems ever since I can remember also. So, that's really how it, how it stood out and kinda stacked up as far as priority, but now we can, we can change that and do different if you all sit fit. We have no problem on which one to work on.
I would agree with what you laid out.
Especially Summer House Mountain. I mean, you got, what, 10 houses? 10, 12 houses?
I think there's 20.
Say at least 10. I was, I was probably leaning closer to 20.
20, okay.
But only routes.
Yeah. And it's only where they got up and down and if they get cut off, I mean, you understand that. But I get calls over 93 about every day and I told them, you know, we're doing the best we can and, you know, we've just gotta go through the steps and do the correct, you know, steps that we gotta take.
And I'll say this too, about anything's possible, you know, if we have the money to do. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we, if we weren't necessarily focused on making sure for sure we're gonna get reimbursed for every red cent.
Right.
And we wanna put contractors to work to get to fixing things, you know, we could, we could fix them all, but, you know, the contractor's gonna want paid every month.
Oh, yeah.
So, we really need a cash flow coming in to be able to fund a project going out. So, that's- So that's, that's really why we're, you know, trying to be methodical about having some cash flow secured before we initiate more than we can, more than we can handle. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Thanks for the comments from the Commission.
I just wanted to make sure, to remind the public, it took, what, four years last time to get the FEMA license check in. So that's just something they need to be aware of, it's not a quick process. And I also thank Mr. Van Alvo's mother, she's been volunteering in our office and helping answer the phones with, so that's been a great help this week.
Just being aware, school starts back this week, so watch out for the buses and the kids.
Mr. Rick?
Yes, I was going to say, is school going back already?
August 7.
August the 7th, here in this, yeah. Please, everybody be school aware and watch for the buses and the little children getting on and off and Linda, summer's over with, I guess.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you're going back to school.
Me too, sir.
That's all I've got.
Next Monday, the 12th, at 6 o'clock, we'll be at Bryant Junior High School for a community meeting, so we'll have a regular meeting and community meeting directly following it. It'll be in the Bryant Junior High, the Nazium at 6 o'clock. And we won't have a meeting on the 19th. And then the 26th, we'll have a work session, then a meeting on the 26th. So that'll get everybody informed on our meetings for the month, so that's all I have. Motion or adjourned?
I'll make the motion.
You got a motion?
Ah, second.
All papers out.
Aye.
All vote.
Aye.